Mashpee Towne, Massachusetts, 02649. It is seven o'clock. We're broadcast live on local channel 18, streamed live on the Town of Mashpee website, I'd ask you to please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, first on the agenda, review of meeting minutes from October 20th. You've got the meeting minutes in your packet. They were also distributed ahead of time. If you have any comments, suggestions, edits, if none, I will entertain a motion to accept the minutes.
So be it.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you. Public discussion, I don't have a list.
My bad.
Thank you, Evan. Thank you.
I didn't do my normal announcement, see if anyone else wanted to sign up. They weren't aware that was there.
Anyone, we have one signed up for public discussion. Anybody else? Okay. Meredith Kilpatrick.
Good evening. My name's Meredith Kilpatrick, three Tracy Lane.
There you go.
There you go.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for allowing us the opportunity to have public dialogue. I'm a citizen, I am the citizen who submitted the open meeting law complaints in July and September. I was specifically referencing the lack of public comment at Mashpee Planning Board meetings. As we all know, the purpose of open meeting law is to ensure transparency in our government. Additionally, per the open meeting law guidelines from Massachusetts, section 17, public participation is entirely within the Chair's discretion and with a special reference that the Attorney General, however, encourages public bodies to allow as much public participation as time permits. Tonight, I'm here to clarify the status of these complaints. In my letter to the Board's selected delegate, Mashpee Town Council Attorney Costello, I confirm that we've recently been notified that the complaints have been assigned to Assistant Attorney General Elizabeth Carnes Flynn. I've provided a full packet outlining and summarizing the actions, I hope I have my glasses on, especially the historical outline of actions of the Mashpee Planning Board, and provided them to her office. We now await a decision as to whether these complaints will be subject to a complete official review and in turn, any resulting action and consequences. I've been advised and encouraged to create opportunities for correction locally, simultaneous to seeking assistance from the Attorney General's office. I have respectfully asked Attorney Costello to seek and provide a more comprehensive consequential resolution. I'm here before the Board tonight to request the Board to take corrective action, too. The most obvious issue with an open meeting law complaint is intent. Is or was there an intent to avoid the parameters of the open meeting law? I had the opportunity last week to speak directly and constructively with Planning Board Chair Falone. He made it clear that it was not his intent to ever be insulting or dismissive to anyone personally or as reference to the open meeting law complaints. More importantly, our conversation centered on the core of my complaint, which was the avoidance and elimination of public comment from Planning Board meetings for over what we now know and understand is closer to six years. He agreed that previous direction of the Board was unchecked and unquestioned, and he could not offer an explanation as to why. He affirmed that he was committed to a consistent public comment or public dialogue at the Mashpee Planning Board meetings. His intent is to follow the guidelines of the open meeting law and to meet or exceed the spirit of public comment as it pertains, excuse me, as it pertains to the open meeting law by encouraging all in the community to voice their questions and concerns. I have confidence in his intent to proceed cautiously and correctively. It has become evident, however, through the research that I've completed and others, that current member, previous Planning Board Chair, Mary Wagan, is directly responsible for eliminating public comment at Planning Board meetings. This gross intentional mismanagement of a municipal board with complete ignorance of the obligations of the open meeting law or the needs of the community requires immediate corrective action. As previously stated by Chair Falone, prior to June 2nd, 2021, the Planning Board held 73 meetings where public comment was not included. Further research revealed that the number of intentional exclusions of public comment from the Mashpee Planning Board meetings began by previous Chair Mary Wagan and is closer to 100, over possibly 110 meetings. These are all potentially finable offenses. That is only determined by the Attorney General's office. Records indicate she began serving as Chair of the Planning Board on or around July 2015 and has since repeatedly provided false guidance to subsequent Planning Board members. Additionally, Mary Wagan continues to show an unusual propensity for encouraging a false narrative against one developer. Her creation and management of a small misguided citizen group envisioned Mashpee has produced several misinformed individuals, including some who serve on other Mashpee municipal boards, including Sewer and Housing. Their collaboration, deliberation, and public presentations outside of any municipal formal meeting, especially as it relates to matters before the Board and town, are similarly inappropriate and unacceptable. I'm here to update the Planning Board and the public this evening as to the reporting of these and other behaviors to the Mashpee State Ethics, Mashpee, Massachusetts State Ethics Commission.
Mr. Chairman, this is going way overboard. There's four, it's already been enough time, and it's in our packet.
Mr. Chair, Mary Wagan is out of order, and I would ask for you to censure her as warning one. Being out of order in number two, I would ask that you please have her removed from the room.
I don't agree with that.
I'm going to allow the comments.
Can we limit it to three minutes?
I'm going to allow the comments to continue.
To how many minutes, sir?
Until she's done.
Please note, while these behaviors are not within the purview of the open meeting law complaints, they are, however, relevant to the evaluation of the complaints. Each office has been provided with detailed outlines, including dates, names, addresses, email addresses, and questionable actions. Item number one submitted to the Massachusetts State Ethics Commission outline are the weekly Zoom meetings. As a current Planning Board member, Mary Wagan hosts and manages a weekly Sunday Zoom meeting with certain members of the community called the envisioned Mashpee Group. The Zoom account has been, the Zoom account being used is unknown. Who pays for the Zoom account is unknown.
I don't want to hear this.
Yeah, this is going overboard. You cut people off so quickly.
This is personal.
No, I'm sorry, it's not. These are violations of the Massachusetts ethics laws.
You're not supposed to talk to anybody.
She's defimating my character. Please stop it. We have it in our packet. If you want to summarize it, that's fine.
You have an agenda here, and I don't like a joint.
This isn't even on the agenda. That's right. It's supposed to be public comment on something on the agenda.
Or previous agenda.
Item number two is maps, documents, and data that Ms. Wagan has altered and provided as information as fact. Item number three are online meetings that she's conducted during her work time with local newspapers. Item number four are letters to the editor that she personally writes and distributes to members in the community and asks them to submit under her, under their name. In September of 2021, the editor of the paper refused to publish two of them because they were, contained the same content from two different individuals. Item number five is a Mashpee Commons public tour. On the public tour, she.
I'm leaving this room.
I'm leaving the room. This is ridiculous.
She presented herself as an expert.
She's the last member of this community by cutting them off at two minutes. But when it's somebody ragging on me, you let it go. Shame on you.
As a summary, I'm almost complete.
Please.
As a summary, as exemplified by the behavior this evening, there's overwhelming information as to the intentional and inappropriate behaviors of current Planning Board member Mary Wagan. Her repeated intentional obfuscation of facts, manipulation of data, provocative comments are creating a divisive community. She acts with a complete disregard for and ignorance of state law and without a sense of ethical obligation. In my letter to your Town Council, our Town Council, your delegate, I respectfully request that Town Council take action to confirm the training and retraining of the current Planning Board members, to immediately request and accept the resignation of Mary Wagan. Additionally, I respectfully request that measures which may be offered in the Town Charter allow the Town Manager to appoint a new Planning Board members. I ask for the Select Board, Town Manager, and Town Council to consider recreating a Planning Board comprised of appointed, qualified individuals with set terms for performance and evaluation. Tonight, I ask the Mashpee Planning Board members to censure Mary Wagan for her many inappropriate actions and elaborate misdeeds, including taking a vote indicating no confidence in her ability to continue as a member of the Planning Board. Simultaneously, I ask that Mary Wagan resign from the Board immediately and allow the community to move forward in a more transparent and positive direction.
Thank you. Thank you. It's unclear to me what our, what our, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. I beg your pardon.
Thank you. It's, I'm not sure what our legal obligations or illegal.
Mr. Chairman, may I suggest that we add an agenda item under the additional topics not recently suggested by the Chair to discuss this letter later in the meeting. I'd like to make a motion that we do this and add it to that as an agenda item.
Second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we'll discuss it under additional topics. Thank you. Okay, Evan. New business.
There are two administrative matters under new business that will require the signatures of two of the Board members that have just left the room. So I don't know if you'd like me to see if they would like to rejoin us in the room.
You want to ask him, or you want me to ask him?
I would like to do public speaking.
You want to?
I came here tonight, no, I'm public speaking now. I came here tonight to ask the Chair to start fresh and new, okay? We had Carol Sherman, the Chairman of the Planning Board, who, excuse me, the SLU board, who asked us to do that. Now, I get that people get to speak here, but they don't get to go on in a way that you've never allowed people to speak before, okay? So that's what I'm taking offense to.
And that's, it's actually not true.
Excuse me?
It's not true. I've allowed people to speak.
Not, not that long, and never that long.
Never that long.
Never that long.
I think the comments were serious enough where we should hear them.
I don't understand your method to running this board. You are going to rip, rip this town apart. And I'm ju, I came in here having a positive attitude, and you're allowing that to happen.
Mary, we took a vote to talk about the letter under additional topics. We're not going to talk about it now.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Evan.
I have the road-taking plan recently approved by Town Meeting that I need the Board signature on. I'll lay it out on the front table.
Thank you. Both of them?
Yes, so we also have, the appeal period is ended for the South Cape, the recently approved South Cape Village Special Permit Modification with no appeals filed, and I will need your signatures on that document as well.
Thank you.
We all got to sign, right?
Yeah, we all sign both.
I'm not signing anything tonight. I don't think you need me to. I'm so upset.
It's one seat. Actually, Rob, I need your signature on this document. You are, whatever your preference to.
Yeah.
It's in the decision. Falone, Phelan, Belzerini, Wagan, Callahan, the President, here we go. Falone, Phelan, Associate Rob, so instead of Mary, was not seated, Rob is seated, but everyone else signs.
John, do you have a report of your meeting with Meredith? John?
Thank you.
John, John.
Meredith.
Do you have a report of your meeting with Meredith?
Do I have a report?
Yeah.
No.
Can you tell me what happened? Was this letter the result of it?
No, the letter was not the result of it, and we're going to talk about the letter later.
Thank you. I just saw the letter. I'm very upset. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Dennis.
So, don't we got to sign another one?
They were both up there.
Oh, did you miss one, Dennis?
You signed.
There should be a paper you signed in the.
Oh, the paper.
Yeah.
Can I say something for a minute?
Sure.
Okay, I want to thank all the people, all the time they showed up at our public meeting. And I'm sorry, sometimes it didn't go well. But the only ones we have to blame is Mashpee Commons. They never gave us anything the Planning Board asked for. And they gave false statements about 1,500 houses, 1,700 houses. And they didn't ever really have true facts. So of course, we're going to think the worst. But that's what we're here for, the people who voted us in to look after the town, not a developer. And it's the Development Cape Cod Commission that never kept us apprised of what was going on. And I don't blame the Chairman here and the town people because the meetings were getting frustrated because we never had true facts. So we better blame the Mashpee Commons right from the beginning, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Dennis. All right, Evan, you're up.
Updates from me, as I had mentioned at our last meeting, at our kickoff meeting with Weston and Sampson on the 28th to begin outlining what our comprehensive planning update will look like. So from here through about the next six weeks was going to be primarily data collection. So what they've asked from me, we included in our RFP itself a list of plans, existing plans, studies, reports. But what they've asked me to do is, you know, to make it absolutely as voluminous as is possible. So I'm reaching out to department heads to ask them the same question, to provide me with any studies that are, any studies, research topics, reports, publications that are relevant to the update and the elemental chapters of the LCP itself. So for any other boards, committees, commissions you work on, or if there's anything you're aware of, please send it to my email. I will also remind the Board in writing. And we are going to get that to Weston and Sampson as soon as possible. So that's, that's step one, is data collection.
Quick question. Are we collecting it all and then giving it to them, or are we giving it to them as we get it?
It should all come through my office. One thing that they made clear, if you have questions about the process, if you have questions for the consultant, please compile them, or as you have them, send them to me so that I can make a comprehensive list of those questions or requests, so that I can send them to the consultant, because every time they respond to a question, it's hitting our budget.
Yep.
So if you could, please, if you have a question, just let me know what it is, and I'll, you know, let them know what those questions are at our bi-weekly meetings, and if necessary, sooner.
My question was more, as you're collecting data, you're not waiting till you have everything you need to give to them, right? As you get data, you send it.
I need to assemble every possible piece of practical information, useful empirical data that will be valuable to them and get it to them as soon as possible.
Good.
Go ahead.
Was that passed along today at the Department head meeting?
It was. It was.
Because if there's any statistical data that I can provide, obviously.
Yeah, so I'm following up to every department head individually, and I'll put it to, I think I'll have the chairs to the relevant regulatory boards as well.
Good.
Evan, are we going to do a survey for the town? Because when we first did this, we had a survey to see where they were at, and it may have changed a lot over the last 15, 20 years.
We did discuss community engagement, and we discussed a little bit about like the rough framework that we had put together last winter and spring relative to community engagement, and we will be defining a robust package of community engagement that'll be inclusive of what we had discussed and more. We discussed a variety of options at a high level, but yes, I think a survey would absolutely be included as part of that engagement work and part of that data collection. And, you know, the specifics of the community engagement of the data collection are to be defined. And as we are, we discuss timeline a bit. We're pushing up right against Thanksgiving. We're pushing up against Christmas. So we anticipate a real, like the launch of this process to be after the data collection, about six weeks, and probably in the new year of 2022. That should be enough time to, for them to compile all the necessary data, all the necessary information, and be prepared to outline the community engagement activities. And I think in early 2022 is when it would be prudent for them to begin coming to the Board to discuss and update both the frameworks that we've discussed for community engagement in the past, but this Board's intention and how you'd like to proceed with that moving forward.
Did he answer you yes or no about a survey?
Yeah, he said yes.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. And so we anticipate that would occur early in January 2022. We anticipated our next meeting between Weston and Sampson and myself to have a conversation with the Chief Planner at the Cape Cod Commission to go over the local comprehensive planning regulations and make sure that the framework we set out is consistent with those regulations. And the last request I'll have of this Board, and then I'm also going to be requesting of other department heads and other boards, is we need to compile a stakeholder list. They're going to give me an initial list based on what they know from the RFP and of the town, but I think we are more well-equipped to provide as thorough and as comprehensive a list of stakeholders that should be participants in this process and include them in all correspondence forthwith. And lastly, we just discussed, you know, strategies for marketing and making people aware of the plan. One thing that I would like to do, because Weston and Sampson came in under a $150,000 budget, is invest in an independent website that we can actually utilize to collect data itself. And they're getting me prices for that.
Will they, can they do that?
They're going to provide me figures, but it's outside of the scope of our contract, I think, at this point. But it's something my department can do with the budget, the Town Meeting is appropriate.
Oh, good, okay, good.
So that's the, that's the kind of the high-level update. It was, you know, very preliminary. But we did discuss having them deliver to me by November 10th, an updated, more comprehensive schedule of benchmarks by the 10th so that we can discuss it at our meeting on November 17th.
Great.
So the list that we did for the RFP, all those materials you're providing them?
Yes.
And you're providing more?
They've asked for it to be as voluminous as possible. So like, you know, the water quality studies, any transportation studies I didn't reference, you know, anything that might add value to their analyses would be beneficial.
Good.
And no wrong answers. It could be, it could be everything.
Right.
No, it's, it's, my concern is to go over budget. This is a lot of material, and I don't want to give them too much that we go over budget. That's all.
Understood. They've asked me for everything, so we'll manage the budget accordingly.
So did they have like a, do you have a certain budget, these tasks, are they broken down? Like each of these tasks, do they have a budget?
Our budget is not to exceed a certain amount, so I'm not all that concerned about going over it, as our agreement is in place. But I could certainly look for more, you know, broken-down figures so that we can be confident that we won't go over budget.
I would expect you will manage that process.
I certainly will. So again, more to come, but the ball is rolling.
That sounds good.
Second update, I did present last night to the Affordable Housing Committee to discuss essentially my build-out, but what my perception and opinion and recommendations are with regard to affordable housing and the inadequacy of the zoning bylaw to produce affordable housing, meaning SHI-eligible units. I thought it was a nice meeting. I presented on the heels of Habitat for Humanity, which has always been a great partner for the town, and kind of set up the conversation well, because I do think that the town is utilizing all of the tools currently at its disposal in the toolbox of addressing affordable housing needs. We have ongoing project at 950 Falmouth Road. I can't recall what Alan had said they're calling the project. They've named it, I think Red Brook Village. We're pursuing a workforce housing project on 108 Commercial Street, and Habitat has ongoing projects. But we are really lacking in our ability to incentivize private investment in affordable housing. So really, what I had discussed with the committee or had asserted is that it would be beneficial on the 17th during this discussed joint meeting with the Affordable Housing Committee, how we define and how we can define the actual need in the Town of Mashpee with regard to affordable housing. I think there was a lot of questions that had come up in previous discussions relative to, you know, what types of housing will meet the need. And I don't mean just the minimum 10% mandate of SHI-eligible affordable units. I mean the actual need based on demographic, population characteristics, income levels, et cetera. And I think this is a town-wide discussion, and ultimately, I think with, with the assistance of the Affordable Housing Committee, working in collaboration with the Board and with my department to assess and define what the need is, we'll be in a really solid position, A, to go through the visioning work and the update to the local comprehensive plan itself, and B, in a position to codify accordingly with amendments that can produce units in a manner consistent with the vision of the town. And I think they were receptive to that, and I'll look forward to the 17th. The topical areas I put as subbullets are just ideas. I would want to discuss that now with the Board if there's anything I'm missing, so that I could forward them to the Chairman of the Affordable Housing Committee so we can have as comprehensive and robust a conversation as possible. Any input?
What about, one of the things I, with affordable housing, we have to have jobs, though, and better-paying jobs than most of the jobs you get on the Cape or retail or something. But do they ever work that in with affordable housing? Because you can build all.
The old chicken or the egg, right?
Yeah.
Jobs or housing, housing or jobs.
But these kind, to me, they kind of go together. We should be looking at.
I think you're right. They do go together. And I think the nature of the housing market today has shown us that they are directly linked, workforce and the need for housing. What we've done, though, is inadequately provide for the housing types that are accessible to a broad range of people, and the broad workforce and family age groups have left Cape Cod. So I think that's the link that's the most salient and most pertinent and what we need to address.
Because all we seem to get is people my age, the old, retired people.
Well, the nature of the.
What's wrong with you, Dennis? Come on, what's wrong?
The nature of the market today is such that it is much more accessible to those who have been able to accumulate wealth over the course of their lifetimes. So I think that's just why we've seen the shifts that we've had, and we can mitigate it. I think it'll just require that a definition of the need. You need to define the problem in order to know how to solve the problem.
Evan, can, very brief, can you, for my benefit and maybe others, can you give me a definition of what inclusionary zoning means?
Inclusionary zoning is, it has the word inclusive in it. It's really supposed to incentivize private development to produce a deed-restricted affordable unit so that there's a broader cross-section of income levels living in your town. And so often, it is, it's, there are certain thresholds that can be defined within the zoning bylaw itself, whereas a certain number of units, we see this with Chapter 40B, the incentive is you can get waivers from the zoning bylaw in exchange for 25% of those units being deed-restricted affordable. We can build something like that into our zoning at some point with an assessment of the appropriate placement, the building typology, et cetera.
There's no current formula now that includes.
We have some inclusionary zoning provisions in our bylaw, but it's mostly specific to the cluster subdivisions bylaw, where we incentivize the inclusion of 10% of the building lots created to be deed-restricted affordable. In fact, if you provide two, you get an extra building lot out of it. That's the incentive. But as I've discussed in that memorandum I presented to you, there's very little subdivitable land left and very few parcels that can. land left and very few parcels that can achieve at least 10 building lots. So the incentive, as we have structured it, is really, is not going to produce enough units. So the memo that I had discussed before was relative to our zoning bylaw, the zoning bylaw, and what we're able to predict in terms of the pattern of development. So this, for me, is all about increasing the number of tools we have available to us to produce a more inclusive, diverse housing stock that is attainable at the market level, but also that is deed-restricted affordable for those who need that. So there's, I think, the logical outcome of the visioning workshops and comprehensive plan update is goals and policies with which we can make the necessary zoning amendments with which we can incentivize private investment in the types of housing that would be beneficial to the community.
Thank you.
So yeah, and I wouldn't like to add, before I forget, because I almost forgot last night, I did submit a application to the Community Preservation Committee for $25,000 to procure a consultant to assist with the update of our housing production plan.
Yeah, good.
We talked about that last meeting, didn't we?
Yes, but I was not able to include in that application letters of support. So if the board would be willing, I would humbly request that the planning board submit a letter of support of that application.
Does that require a motion?
It, well...
Yes.
Yeah. I would like to make a motion that we do supply a letter of support as outlined by the town plan.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So I have to abstain because I'm a member of the Community Preservation Committee, so I shouldn't vote twice. So I'm going to abstain.
Good.
That's good, though.
All right, we'll do that.
And so in the interim before the 17th, if there are things that would be appropriate topics to discuss with the Affordable Housing Committee between now and maybe next Wednesday, if you have ideas that you don't have now, please submit them to me by email, and I'll make sure they get to the chair.
I have a...
So, okay.
I have a question. If I was looking at this, I would look at how much people make, and like, say it was like $18 an hour.
Sure.
I would try to get houses from, like, start at that point, you know? Do they look at that, like, the average income of all the Cape workers? Because there's some that, like, work at hospitals that make pretty good, or teachers, but there's a lot of people that work.
One person I know who I work with frequently in town is the chair of the Affordable Housing Committee, has done pretty reasonable analysis of the data. If you, I don't remember if you were there, Dennis, it was right when I started, but there was a, an early, it was the Mashpee Commons by Design process in 2018, right when I started, and it was a housing topic, a housing topic specifically, and Alan present, made a presentation at that meeting, which he wasn't able to finish. But he's done this exact analysis, which is, I think, a great starting off point for which this, we can have these conversations. It is relatively old data, though. It's from 20, it's the 2010 census. We can make certain assumptions about what has occurred between 2010 and now, but we still don't have the updated figures. So ideally, the, these analyses would be updated pursuant to the most recent figures, which we don't have yet. But I think what Alan has produced would be a great starting off point to, for defining the need itself, which does look like it, at income levels and population and demographics, et cetera.
Is he, is he prepared to do that at the 17th?
It's some, it's, we've discussed it, and I'll make clear to him, assuming the board is comfortable with that as a topic and a presentation from his committee, to start there.
Yeah, it seems like a good place to start.
So I mentioned, first of all, I asked you a few questions when you first gave us the build-out analysis. Did you ever...
I don't recall the questions.
Okay, and one of them was, what was the mechanism to deed-restrict housing for year-round for the missing middle?
I remember this question. I think you had asked me, what can you do to ensure that housing is, is year-round?
You used year-round for the missing middle.
I didn't look into this because I forgot, Mary, I have to apologize. But I'm assuming, based on the way you structured that question, that it would, could be done by deed restriction.
Okay.
I'm asking, is that, is that a correct assumption?
I don't know, maybe that's something that Alan can confirm.
Okay.
The other one was, like, right, so how do, how do we, how do we make these units year-round? Is there a way? And is it, is it the deed restriction?
I understand. I apologize for not following up.
There's no, there's no sense of building housing that's not going to be used year-round because we have so little developable capacity, development capacity in town. If we build housing that's only used part of the time, it doesn't address our housing needs for our residents, so...
I apologize for not getting that to you sooner.
No, that's okay. I'm just looking at you funny because I'm trying to remember what I asked you. The Chapter 40B that was issued to Mashpee Commons in 2007, you were going to find out how many units were permitted and how many units were built?
I'm sorry, I didn't get that from you either.
That's okay, that's okay.
But that's on the agenda for that meeting, right? I'm assuming we would talk about that.
For our next meeting, why don't I, to respond to that question, send you the permit itself, and we'll discuss it.
Perfect.
And I'd like to know how many are built. I think it's 32.
Yeah, it's always on Alan's agenda.
But he has this number, 52?
He's 58, it's, it's just the first phase.
Oh, okay.
It's phased, so he's, that, that number is relative to completion of Phase 1.
And were you trying to find me the map for that comprehensive permit? Was that in your list of things to do?
And that is available for you at the clerk's office.
Oh, good. And there was one more thing. Nope, I think that was it. The total number of units and the, from that comprehensive permit and the number built to date. Okay, I think that was it, thanks. Oh, I mentioned at our last meeting, the Falmouth, Falmouth has a proposed affordable housing bylaw where they have certain lots identified throughout the town where they can get up to like, I think, three, three stories.
It's their mixed-use overlay, right?
It's coming up for approval?
Yes.
Yeah, can you get us a copy of that?
I can do that.
To look at, because I think that's what other communities would call an affordable housing bylaw.
Yeah, it's, I did look at it.
Oh, okay.
Not inconsistent with many of the recommendations I've made in the past, so I'd be happy to get a copy from Tom Bott and provide it to you.
And it's, it's a what, a mixed-use?
I believe, I'm assuming I'm referencing the same thing Mary is, because I Googled Falmouth Affordable Housing Bylaw in it, and the upcoming town meeting is contemplating a mixed-use overlay, of which there are inclusionary provisions contained therein.
Okay.
Assuming that we're talking about the same thing, I can certainly provide then. If there are two different things, I'll send you both.
Yeah, okay.
It was, it had a very strong affordable housing component. It gave it height, it gave them height. I don't know about density, because I didn't read it that carefully. But for rental projects, it allow, it required 25% of the units to be affordable. And that's because when you have a rental project and 25% of the units are affordable, all, 100% of the units go on the inventory. It's a bonus for affordable rental housing. So it's a way to build up your numbers on your subsidized housing inventory and make your 10% goal. For homeownership, they're requiring 50% affordable, which is probably the highest I've ever seen. So I was just interested to see...
Well, that's trying to dissuade single-family...
It's reflective, it's reflective of the need.
Is that what it is?
Yeah.
To dissuade?
Yeah, it's certainly reflective of the need.
Oh, they probably, because they probably can't prohibit homeownership.
Right.
I don't think you can prohibit homeownership under zoning, so they just make it, they just make it prohibited with that, okay.
Cost-wise.
All right, that was it.
I can provide all the, those things to you guys.
Thank you, Evan. Anything else? Any other?
Nope.
Okay, good.
Committee reports, Cape Cod Commission?
No report.
Community Preservation?
They have received eight applications. So Evan, you got some competition.
Every year I submit something, it's the competitive round. It is what it is.
We'll write a really compelling letter of support.
Yeah.
Design Review?
I was absent last meeting when it should have been brought up, but did the Quashnut sign come to plan?
Nope, that's just, that's under your purview, not on plan review.
There was a sign, request for Quashnut Valley for a new sign on their front facade of the building, and it went through, it looks very nice.
Yeah.
The street sign is nice.
Yeah, it's mirroring that, but just above the door.
Nice, good.
That was it.
Plan Review?
No meeting, meeting next Tuesday.
Environmental Oversight, there was no meeting. Historic District Commission? Military Civilian?
There is a meeting November 17th, which is the same evening as our meeting, but it's at 5:30, so I will be able to attend.
Zoom conference as well.
It's a Zoom meeting, so I'll be able to attend it for Friday or so.
Do you have the agenda?
No, I don't even have the meeting notice, but I know the date, so...
Okay.
They notified my office of a meeting, but they didn't include an agenda.
Yeah, so I'll reach out to the head of the committee and see if I can get an agenda.
Can you share that with me, if you remember?
If I get it.
Thank you.
Okay, Evan, anything in the correspondence?
It's all typical, with the exceptions of the item already discussed that was received yesterday.
Thank you.
And, and an email from Mr. Andrew Reed, which I included in your packet, but those are the only items.
Did you, did you talk to Mr. Reed?
No, he just asked my office how he could provide comment to the board, and I sent him the, the guidance on how to submit comments to the board, and that was received either yesterday or today, I think it was this morning.
Yeah, he's done some research.
Just in the evening.
I just wondered why he didn't send it to the Board of Slockman.
I cannot answer that question for you, no idea.
Thoughts, questions?
Well, I asked something to put for additional topics, may I speak to that now?
Yes, you may.
So I, unfortunately, when you stepped out of the room, I asked to move this to additional topics so I could talk about this letter.
Can I, can I start by saying I apologize for being such a brat?
Yeah, it's okay.
And leaving the room and being rude and interrupting. I'm sorry.
I, I read this letter intently this afternoon when I first got it, and I've reread it numerous times. Obviously, when you get letters like this, I, I first say to myself, it doesn't have any supporting documentation with it, so you have to look at it with that type of eye. However, there are some disturbing things in this letter that I'm concerned about. And if even some of this is true, it puts a damper on this board. For me, I mean, if, if you, I mean, did you conduct tours at the Mashpee Commons on or about the 19th of September?
I meet with my constituents. I meet with my constituents. I don't meet with applicants. So I haven't read the letter, I got the letter just at this meeting. So no, I haven't met it, I haven't read it, I've not studied it, but I meet...
Just a simple yes or no, did you conduct tours at Mashpee Commons on or around the 19th of September?
I have, I don't have my calendar, I'm not going to answer that question.
Did you conduct tours?
I, well, I meet my constituents, Jack. I talk to my constituents, you know, I talk, I talk to my constituents.
And this other note, did you create letters and hand them out to your constituents so they can submit them to the paper?
I don't remember, Jack, I...
Well, you would remember if you did it. I mean, whether it's recent or, or previously...
I, I meet with my constituents, that's allowed.
Doing form letters, though, do you think that's allowed? Where you do a form letter, pass them out, have them send it in?
Do you talk to anybody outside of this room about planning board materials?
I talk to people outside this room about the town.
Right, okay.
Not about anything that's before...
So I do, too. It's, it's a constituent service.
Yeah, but I don't provide letters for them to project my opinion, to present to the, to the paper. And that's what this reads like.
Well...
But I, I, I have the floor right now, but if...
You're asking me.
I know, but...
You're asking me.
But I'm, I'm saying, reading this letter, and I implore any, any, any resident town to go online to our website and download it, but if half of this is true, it really, if even half of it is true, it raises some serious concerns about this board's...
It's, there's...
Please, let me just finish.
Okay.
It raises serious concerns about this board's ability to make an impartial decision based on information we get. And I just, I have really serious concerns. Now, granted, this has got to get vetted out, it's going to be reviewed, the Attorney General's Office has assigned someone to review it, which is an unusual step, I think, anyway. But I have some serious concerns...
Thank you, Jack.
...that are raised by this letter.
Thank you, Jack. I'll take that under advisement, sir.
Anybody else?
Nope.
The only, I mean, I could have, my one question was just about the meetings of the group up with the enterprise? Was that...
I meet, I meet with my constituents, okay?
But the enterprise is...
There's no, there is no, there is no violation of the open meeting law in here because there was no quorum. I'm an elected official and I represent people.
I don't see what the problem is, as long as there wasn't two more planning board members there, and then you violate the open meeting law. She was by herself with her, with her friends, her committee, whatever it is, but as a citizen of Mashpee, she wasn't acting as a planning board member.
Dennis, I'll ask you a question.
No, can I respond to that?
Let me just ask a quick question of Dennis.
I'd like to, I'd like to respond to that. I have Second Amendment rights myself. Because I'm elected here, it doesn't void me from talking to the community, okay? What I can't do is talk outside of this room with three of us present at the same time. What I cannot do is talk to the applicant outside of this room, okay? That's what I can't do. But we've been through this before, people have seen me talking to people about things in the town hall lobby, and they made a big ques, they asked me, what, what happened? I went to the Ethics Commission and I got cleared, okay? So my, you, I have had opinions from the Ethics Commission that, yes, I can talk to my constituents. What I can't do is talk to the applicant, and what I can't do is meet with two of you outside of this room.
And...
Dennis, can I just ask a question, if you're Miami Chair?
Please.
If you look on the back page of this thing, it talks about conducting a tour with her constituents, as she alludes, in the Mashpee Commons, pointing out, as it says here, now again, this is unsubstantiated right now, providing a negative evaluation of quality and grade of construction and property management for the Mashpee Commons. That, there in front of us as a proponent, how is that not a conflict?
Were you there, sir?
I'm just, I'm just reading this.
Right.
If you read this, it's a problem.
You weren't there, sir.
Right, and that's, that's what needs to be vetted out.
You weren't there, sir. If you'd like to take a walk with me through Mashpee Commons, I'd be happy, but I'd have to go with the whole board.
The question was to Dennis.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't, I don't see the conflict there, because she wasn't meeting with a board member. And she wasn't meeting the developers. She could say anything she wants in the Mashpee Commons, she could take any people, my opinion, any people around and say, look how bad that constructed, look what they're going to do. I mean, it's not swaying me, or you, or John, none of us.
Well, to be clear, though, the complaint is an ethics complaint, it's not an open meeting law complaint.
Right.
But that's, to me...
This says, RE, Town of Mashpee Planning Board, Open Meeting Law Complaints. That's what it's regarding.
On page three, Massachusetts State Ethics Commission outline, so the items being discussed that Jack raised are under the ethics violation.
How about this? Because this was sent to our town, town council, why don't I get a meeting with town council?
Yeah.
Why don't I talk about it with town council?
This is one...
Would that, would that allay your concerns?
This is one opinion setting all these things that were done wrong, but there's no proof to this. I haven't seen any of that.
I will say, Dennis, there is some hearsay in here, but there are some things that are, that are, that are published in here that are direct quotes, having been involved in having been involved in conversations, so that's not hearsay. I, I do agree- I do agree, it needs to be vetted out to the town attorney, but I have concerns with this, and I'm glad it's going to get better.
Then I'll go to town council, and I'll have a meeting with town council.
Well, you can do that on your own, that's, that's, the town council makes the decision on this, not I. But I have concerns with this, and I want to revoice that.
How does town council make a decision on this?
Well, town council got this, they're going to have to make a decision. This opens up the door, as far as I'm concerned, the town has some liability if some of this is true.
Town council has no authority over elected officials.
If, if, if an elected official puts a town in a liability issue, yeah, the town council does have a say.
No, he does not. He doesn't, he cannot, he-
I think this goes to the-
May not have any say with you, but the town may bear some liability.
And it'll get vetted at the AG.
Right.
It has gone to the AG's office.
Yeah, let's see.
Okay.
You know, it, it, yes.
I didn't read it before the meeting, I didn't read it before the meeting. Again, I apologize for, like, having an emotional outburst. I did leave the room, it was a good suggestion that I left the room because I was emotional. I am a human being, and I apologize for that.
I'm glad you came back.
Oh, thank you.
All right.
I think we have a motion to adjourn.
That's the quietest I've ever seen you say that.
Chair, it's not on this topic, but I'd like to make a quick comment.
Let it go.
You were talking about getting the- I've been thinking about this. Lynn Barbie, Surf Drive. You're talking about figuring out what the pay level is in Mashpee, like, what the income level is? Half of this board not only has a union contract that sets the pay, but also has benefits. Right, if you work, you're in the union, right? If you work for-
No.
Well, some of you are, some of you are.
No, I'm not.
Some of you are in the union that's covered by a union contract, evidence, right? So, it's important when we're, because I spent years working as a union rep. It's important when we're trying to figure out really what people's income is that we think about the benefits, because the hospitals are unionized, they have benefits. The town, most town people are unionized and have some union contract. And the benefits are really part of their income. We can't just look at how much you make per hour. Stop and Shop, they have a union contract, right? So, they have benefits. So, when we're trying to figure out what people's real income is, we need to think about whether they have health insurance and a pension and any of those things, because there are a lot of people, because I've worked with the public sector people. A lot of people work in the public sector because they have the benefits that they really need, whether it's a pension or whatever. They can make more money maybe somewhere else. So, I think it's really an important piece of information for us in thinking about the housing to really think about, define income, not just an hourly rate.
Right.
So, total compensation?
Yeah, yeah, because, because in many jobs, people, you do some, you know, work those jobs for the benefits and not-
Yeah, and if, correct me if I'm wrong, I think you're thinking the benefits as a positive, where actually I think of the benefits as a net negative because they have to pay that hospital, you know, monthly fee and those other fees. So, their disposable income is actually reduced by the amount of money that they have to pay to support these benefits. I know that the town, it's a portion of it, but the person still has to pay, you know, those fees.
We're trying to determine what he-
I see what you're saying, if you look at the net disposable income, it may change where their affordability is. So, I agree with you.
Yeah, no, I just think that, because I was thinking of, like, oh, you know, how much, what did they make at the Stop and Shop? Oh, well, they have some benefits, so, and maybe at Roach Brothers, they don't, I don't know.
Yeah, but Stop and Shop takes benefit, it takes, takes union dues from part-time employees, and we may only work there 10 hours, yet they have to pay the full union dues, and they end up with a paycheck of almost nothing.
It's a complicated issue to try to get-
It's a great point, but it is complicated.
Your broader point is-
I just wanted to sort of put that out.
Yep, I understand.
Total compensation, because there's, there's commissions, there's all kinds of other compensation.
Right, 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 right. And so, just saying, you know, what's the hourly rate that somebody makes when they're working at X place doesn't really necessarily give us all the information we were looking at in terms of thinking about, you know, what's affordable housing and what's workforce housing.
Great, no, good point, thank you, yes, please.
Final point, it's a good point. I mean, often affordability is looked at, not just at income level and the cost of housing, but also the cost of your travel to go to work and the time cost of accessing your income. It's all, so it is a complex problem, but these are the multiple considerations and an issue on the Cape. Most of the people who are making a reasonable income on Cape Cod, who still live here, are going pretty gosh darn hard to do it.
That's Dennis's point earlier.
So, yes.
Jobs and support.
I agree, it's a complex issue and should be looked at through those multiple levels.
All right, well, I just, your conversation about that was triggering in me, it's like, what's income, and we should think about that.
Yeah, no, thank you, thanks.
Sorry, I didn't-
No, that was very helpful.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a, we have a motion.
Judge Aaron.
Second.